Hello. Welcome to our planning commission meeting tonight. And I will leave you off the floor. We will start with question.
I'd like to leave just to clarify, on the United States of America, due to the role of systems funded under our municipal, for the change of.
A better hello again and welcome.
Chair Murphy, just a reminder that the microphones are working this evening.
Hello. Hello. All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary, if you could take the role, please.
Please let the record show that all planning commissioners are present.
All right. Moving on to item one, minutes of the regular planning commission meeting, September 24th, 2018. Does any, do any of our commissioners have any changes to make regarding the text?
No, I would move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
With the minutes are put, we are now moving to public comments. Anyone wishing for less than five minutes during public comment session or on agenda item is asking you to request your consent for an internal report. Can you perform as a facilitator, planning commission secretary, partner, committee will be heard by planning commission. Any person wishing to address the planning commission other than those scheduled time sessions, this request will reduce over time in order to conduct a community meeting. For the agreement, time meter per person, overall time meter of fifteen minutes for public comments, which we meant, state law for this planning commission, any action on the schedule of hiding, is considered as long as attention. So we bring up somebody who has, when I call your name, I will pronounce your name correctly. You will come and stand at the bias, speaking by the, for some of us here. The first one, we have Joey King.
Hello, may I speak for agenda item two? Not right now.
I'm sorry, Missy. I don't, I have these out of order and way to.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's because I don't have it on.
That's always a useful tool. Thank you. All right. So we are, we have, we're moving on to the consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar. And which moves us then to item two, public hearing. The item two consists of coastal development permit, CDP 18-0008, conditional use permit, CUP 18-0007, and site development permit, SDP 18-0015, to demolish an existing Chevron station and construct a new Chevron service station and convenience store with alcohol sales and sign program at 34306 Pacific Coast Highway. The applicant is Gary Semling, architect, SandTech. The address is 34306 Pacific Coast Highway. We will start, is there a recommendation by staff to move forward for discussion?
Madam Chair, Senior Planner Sean Nicholas has a presentation that he can begin with.
Thank you, if you would, sir.
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. Sean Nicholas, project planner. This is a request for a new Chevron station and the coastal development permit, conditional use permit and site development permit accordingly. Just to reference everyone, the vicinity map here, it is at the corner of Dela Bispo and Pacific Coast Highway where the existing Chevron station is across the street from the Denny's and in, at a gateway entrance into our community and also right there at the entrance of Dana Point Harbor and Doheny State Beach. Some background, originally developed in 1966, there hasn't been a lot of improvements or changes to the site since then. The proposed project in front of you will result in full demolition of the site except for the site walls, which will remain. They will utilize the existing parcel, as we will see in the coming images, with the new site plan, and it will include a proposal for a convenience store with beer and wine sales, a new fuel canopy, a new sign program. I'd like to just highlight again for the planning commission and for members of the public, that the project is located within the Dana Point specific plan, and with that, the Orange County zoning code is the applicable requirements we utilize for items which aren't specified in the Dana Point specific plan itself. So here's an existing site with some images of the existing facility as it's, as it occurs today. As you can see here, the existing building is located here. Here's that gate area that you can kind of see back here with this large open vacant space behind the existing building. The existing, these are the existing pumps and the existing canopy above it, the existing tanks. As you can see, the walls are shown to remain, but everything else, including this landscape corner right here, will be fully removed. And when done so, we will get a new layout and site plan for the project site. As you can see, it does push the new convenience store all the way up against adjacent to the convenience store, having a minimal access way here of only three, three and a half feet needed just for OCFA access. This is actually the proposed draft land, preliminary landscape plan. You can see the new landscape buffer that's being planted between the existing residential there on PCH as well as the above residential development, the development above on the hill, some trees being planted, as well as several new trees being planted, ground cover and landscaping along the frontage on Dela Bispo. One of the highlights you probably noticed key change is they are narrowing the curb there on Dela Bispo to help reduce speeds in which people access the site from that location, as well as increasing the landscape area along Dela Bispo and Pacific Coast Highway with new ground cover and drought-tolerant landscaping. It's also really important to note that the fuel canopy is being moved back about 12-plus feet from its existing condition to allow for more easy access and off of Pacific Coast Highway and providing more of a buffer there. Also, it's important to note that all of the ongoing mitigation of the soils that has been going on for some time has been completed, and they're just in the final process of paperwork, so on and so forth, with Orange County Health that oversees that. All of that equipment will also be removed with this project and will not be reinstalled as the soil remediation has been completed. The trash enclosure and the loading area has been set back away from the street as required. All of the trash enclosures and the mechanical rooms have been covered with decorative trellis, so that way it will not be visible if looking down and for water quality purposes. Staff has worked very closely with the applicant to lay out the site in terms of variety of measures in which we will continue to go over to address longstanding issues that we've had in the area with illegal camping and loitering on the site. So a lot of, a lot of design elements were incorporated into the site plan to try to address these issues upfront. So in terms of architecture, you'll see we're getting much improved over the existing metal building that's out there. This is a project that is a Spanish colonial revival design with smooth white stucco with their earth tone wainscot on the bottom. You'll also notice the Catalina accent tiles. Really want to highlight and applaud the applicant for using a full arch, not a segmented arch for the entryway, as well as larger decorative lightings to signify the entrance into the facility and then smaller decorative lights to match. You'll also notice here on the edges, on the sides, they're using a very authentic tile rollover detail with a scalloped edge in the stucco. So again, a lot of detail being put into that in the side there. On the edges in terms of the roof, it is a terracotta, single barrel roof design, full roof being proposed, and I have the sample showing that. On the next slide, actually, you can see another full arch. This is facing Dela Bispo. There's conditions of approval associated with trying to screen and blend in these control joints as much as possible to make the building as high-end and high-quality as we possibly can for the location. Here again is the other side facing up towards the hillside going up towards the residences. You can see a sample of the trellis, the wood trellis structures that will cover the mechanical rooms and the trash enclosures to screen them. You can see here as a sample of what that looks like, that 25% mortar packing that's required for the roof field tile, again, to create that authentic undulating look to the roofs, as well as the mortar, bird mortar, mortar packing being able to utilize for the bird stops for the roofs. Also, you can see here on this rear that they're using lights all throughout to illuminate that backside to try to, again, to make it as difficult as possible for people to get into areas for illegal camping or loitering where they should not be. There's several, there's going to be gates installed here as well as along the side here to avoid and make it as difficult as possible for individuals to get back in there, as well as also a lot of transparency, so there's no real places to hide in back through that area. A photometric plan has been prepared for the site, including evaluating all this additional illumination that's been provided to you in your packets this evening. And while, as we've expressed to some of the residences that have come to talk with staff, they will look down and see lights. It's been designed so though it's cut off, so nothing will be glaring up into their homes. And the photometric plan shows that there is no increase in the illumination as it goes up the hill. So we're getting additional safety and appropriate illumination for the site without impacting our neighbors, which was important to staff. Just wrapping up some of the architectural components, staff also worked with them on the canopy for an architectural design to fit within the Spanish colonial revival architectural vernacular. As I'm sure most of you know, the Spanish colonial revival, the elegance is in the simplicity of some of the details. And so again, we have a smooth white stucco finish, which is the simple cornice top, not going with the faux red tile roof you often see when they try to do the Spanish style with just, it's a parapet. So this is a very simple, clean architectural design to fit in with that Spanish design. I'd like to highlight that they're using Catalina tiles and a concrete base here. The reason for that is that's the area that is potentially the most open to damage. Catalina tiles are actually extremely sturdy and are very resistant to banging and hitting, and as well as why we recommend not utilizing foam for the cap, because foam can be easily damaged and with the concrete, it will be very durable and last longer and maintain its high-quality appearance for a much longer period of time. Associated with the site development permit, which is required for the master sign program, staff has worked very closely with the applicant again to get high-quality signage, especially as it's put on the buildings. They're shown here while they'll be the full color during the day. You can see on all of the signs, on the canopy and on the building are halo illuminated. So again, very minimal illumination at night, very high-quality illumination utilized throughout the community. And with all of their signage, I just wanted to highlight that they're approximately 200 square feet below the maximum allowed signage for the site. The last component of the application this evening is a conditional use permit, and that is associated with the beer and wine sales. The proposal from the applicant includes beer and wine sales from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Staff has worked very closely with the chief of police services to develop operational conditions of approval that have been included as part of your packets this evening and is already incorporated into the draft resolution before you. Those in particular are conditions of approval nine through 18. And I just wanted to highlight a few of those operational conditions which have been already included in your conditional approval before you this evening. There will be no allowed individual containers of alcohol to be sold associated with the site. There will be required to file a no trespass letter with OCSD prior to any permits being issued for the site, and that includes demolitions. So that means if we receive a call for loitering or other issues of illegal camping, that OCSD will have the ability to go on-site and take care and address any of those issues. That they must enforce and maintain and keep up to date on-site. The no sales list is provided by the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Security cameras to be installed in all areas, behind the building, on the sides, any areas that are potentially could be utilized for illegal camping or loitering, or especially in front of the stores, and with a two-week retention period. And to require, a requirement for, to report any illegal activity as promptly as possible, and that all individuals that are serving or selling alcohol on-site must be 21 years or older and must have all ABC required LEED certifications. And staff has received some public comment on this issue. Staff is expecting probably some additional public comments this evening as well on the alcohol sales. So just going into conclusion, we did also receive some public comments regarding the canopy height. Chevron has indicated that their standard for all new facilities such as this is 16 and a half foot clearance. The overall height proposed is 21 feet to the top of the parapet beyond that. That's six inches below the top of the roof of the proposed convenience store and 14 feet below the maximum height of the project allowed in the Dana Point specific plan. Overall, the project site has been redesigned to really try to address by site planning and these types of things. A lot of the issues that have been ongoing increases the landscaping on-site throughout and also does provide a new Spanish colonial revival architecture, consistent with many of the other improvements we've seen lately and recently in the downtown and town center. So staff has reviewed all the required findings and believe that they all can be met and has been provided in your draft resolution before you. And staff does recommend approval of the coastal development permit, conditional use permit and site development permit, subject to the findings and conditions included in the draft resolution. Staff is available now and after public comments if necessary for any, to address any questions from the commission.
All right, thank you. At this point, I would ask that we hear from our council members, our committee members regarding if they have any questions. Does the commissioners have any questions?
Sure, I have a couple. I just wanted to confirm, you said that, it sounded like there's already been soil testing out there for any leaky underground storage and it's been identified and it's going to be fully cleaned up and certified to be clean, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I didn't catch everything you said about the height, the height of the canopy. So maybe if you could repeat that and/or explain what was, what went into, you know, what kind of discussions or thought was put into, you know, the canopy height as it is today so far?
So in terms of the proposal before the planning commission, 16 and a half feet is what was proposed by the applicant Chevron. They've indicated that, that is their standard that they utilize for clearance. They've indicated particularly with this site, due to the proximity to the Doheny State Beach and to the harbor, they've had a lot of issues with taller vehicles coming through the site and a lot of damage to that canopy in the past. So that's been one of their driving reasons for wanting to go with their quote-unquote "standard" approach. Just in terms of staff reviewing it, staff wanted to make sure that the architectural design was just compatible and the architect and the two structures were consistent in terms of scale with one another. And so the fact that the canopy itself is shorter than the proposed convenience store, which is that the canopy is proposed to be at 20 feet, top of parapet, and the top ridge of the, of the, of the convenience store is at 21 feet six inches. That they seem to be compatible and also the fact that it was still 14 feet below the maximum height allowed, which is 35 feet. Also, they had only minimal signage, because we were worried about there being, having light glare if there was excessive signage, but again, minimal signage is proposed on it. So based on those design components, staff was supportive of the design as proposed.
Thank you. And what's the existing canopy height right now?
I believe, I believe the clearance off the top of my head is 11 and a half feet currently with a roof, and that's at the edge, and it does have a roof pitch, and I believe it probably gets close to 14 feet at the roof pitch. It's not extremely high roof pitch, so that's why I would guess it's probably in the 13 to 14 foot tall height.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Callaghan?
Sean, I just have one question. In the documents, it's saying that there's a adjustment required, that are they merging the two parcels together to a single?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Vice chairman, donor?
Sean, you said cameras were required. Would that be behind the station also?
Yes, sir.
And the no sale list, that's from the Orange County Sheriff's Department?
Yes, sir.
Individuals that they can't sell liquor to?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, a couple of questions. What, what type of alcohol license is this, is beer and wine only?
For off-site sale, you know what, off the top of my head, I could look up for you, maybe perhaps during some of other comments and tell you what license it is. I know 46 is beer and wine for onsite consumption. I always forget, it's a different number for off-site consumption.
All right, so I think they would be getting to 20 if it was for just beer and wine, if I'm not mistaken.
Something to that effect, I, yeah. I know it's in that area.
Definitely verify this is not liquor sales, if we're talking beer and wine.
It is not liquor sales.
All right. Couple of questions on the staff report that I noted. License type, and then can you tell me more about what the no sell list is under condition number 17?
So that's one of the conditions that came from working with the chief of police services, and that's something that they provide out to business, to the business community here in Dana Point, based on a list of people. I guess you could say maybe that we've had issues with in the past for a variety of reasons, and so they've create this and maintain. I believe the chief said on a quarterly basis, I don't believe they do it monthly, but on the, whenever that basis that it comes out and is updated, that gets distributed and we'll just make sure that as a component of this project, that gets provided to Chevron and it's up there and displayed at the counter, and they have that information available to them.
And just, but so I understand what this is, is this a list that essentially they're not allowed to sell alcohol to these people on this list? Is that what this is?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And then on condition eight, the C of O issuance as delivery hours? What are our requirements on construction? Because we've got, you know, an apartment building right next door and want to ensure that, you know, for the, from the extent that we don't condition this thing in a manner that, you know, hurts them. What are the rules and then do we have an anti-idling policy?
We have our, it has been conditioned with the standard building hours, which I believe is Monday through Friday at least seven to seven. I believe there are hours on Saturday. I can look those up for you off the top of my head if they're not in another condition of approval with no work being done on Sunday and holidays. So it's just standard what it would be for any development in the community. As well, associated with no idling, again, it would just be whatever requirement we have in the municipal code in terms of noise compliance, especially during construction, we do have requirements. And if we get complaints, you know, we find that most people are willing to work with staff to make sure we don't impact our neighbors. But if that's something in particular is concerned to the commission, it's definitely something we, a condition of approval could potentially be added if it's something that you feel strongly about.
Okay. And then on the alcohol conditions, off the top of your head, do you know if that's a, what a standard? You know, on these CUPs, we've got three, four gas stations, several of them sell beer and wine. What do those conditions look like in the past? Would it be done?
There is only a few. I know that in, we did a survey recently of the, some of the stations that do serve. Many of them have longer hours than this. And I would say that most of these conditions do actually have effect, especially regarding, like for example, condition of approval, I apologize, number 14, which has to do with if there's any continuing issues that come up, you know, additional operational conditions can be added. Associated with those service stations that have those requirements upon them, we haven't seen to have any issues that we've had to revisit on those situations. I know we have other facilities. I don't know what those, you know, what the story is or history is on some of those, but in terms of the gasoline-serving service stations that we've had, those, my understanding is we have not had any issues. So these are, that's a standard condition of approval we've utilized.
All right, that was it. Thank you. Oh, I had one more, sorry. On the cover sheet of the plans, the heights referenced are different than on the architecture drawings. Want to make sure that we are consistent and we're not approving. So they got the C store at 25 feet three inches and the canopy at 28 10?
No, it is as shown in the elevations, 21 six, 21 feet six inches on the elevation for the convenience store as it's shown in 3.0 and 3.1, and then 21 feet as it's shown on the canopy. And that's what it's reflected in terms of the conditions of approval.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions? All right, then we'll close this portion. Would we rather speak to the request now, since we've, we've now left the questioning by, by the commission?
I would recommend you open public comment, and you may want to start with the applicant, who I believe has a speaker slip in.
Okay, so let's start with the applicant first. All right, very good. Okay, the owner is Barry Burkett, from Best California Gas Limited. The applicant is Gary Semling, Semling, sorry, architect, SandTech. Hello, and you are?
Good evening. My name's Gary Semling with SandTech Architecture.
Very good.
I'm the architect of the project that, good evening, chairwoman, commissioners. That was very, you asked a couple of really good questions. I can get you some answers. I have a couple other people with me from Chevron that can answer any of the operations questions that we have. The station, this project's been in the works for about six years. The entitlement process on and off again, and so we're really, really excited to be working with Sean on this project, because, you know, he's got a lot, he's really into the details, and, and any of the questions and comments and concerns that the neighbors have had, we've really had to work out these things. In prior site plans, there was a car wash on the project. You know, we've really simplified the site plan a few years ago to not allow that, because we didn't want to disrupt the neighbors. The canopy height seems to be a major concern, and I think historically, when Chevron took over this station, they've spent a lot of money repairing that canopy, because it's kind of a peaked gable, and the lowest end is at, it's 11 foot 10 high. And before coming to the planning commission meeting this evening, we went by there, and it had been hit again right on the corner off of PCH. So again, Chevron's standard height is 16 foot six clear, but understanding the concerns of the neighbors and the view of the station, and, you know, this is really being kind of the gateway to PCH Highway, you know, we would be willing to drop that to 14 foot six clear. I believe that would then make it, 21 minus two is 19 foot tall at the top and 14 foot six clear. My understanding is freeway overpass design is usually about 14 foot eight, 14 10, something like that. We just want to make sure that any tall structures or tall vehicles or any boats or anything do not damage the canopy. But we would be willing to make that compromise, especially if it's acceptable to the neighbors. So, you know, Chevron Products Company is requesting approval for this conditional use permit for 24-hour operation to sell beer and wine. That is a type 20 license that we're requesting. This facility is owned and operated by Chevron Corporation. This is not a franchisee. Store provides an attractive and convenient shopping environment that offers high-quality and convenient customer-centric offerings. I'm assuming that as the applicant, I can keep going? Anyway, thank you. You know, Chevron operations ensure the highest quality standards for cleanliness, maintenance, and their adherence to restricted age sale items and regulations. The station would be when Chevron took over this station, they've spent a lot of money repairing that canopy because it's kind of a, a peaked gable. And the lowest end is at, it's eleven foot, ten high. And before coming to the planning commission meeting this evening, we went by there, and it had been hit again right on the corner off of PCH. So, um, again, Chevron's standard height is sixteen foot, six clear. Um, but understanding the concerns of the neighbors and the view of the station, and, you know, this is really being kind of the gateway to PCH Highway, you know, we would be willing to drop that to fourteen foot, six clear. Um, I believe that would then make it, uh, twenty-one minus two is nineteen foot tall at the top and fourteen foot, six clear. Uh, my understanding is freeway overpass design is usually about fourteen foot, eight, fourteen, ten, something like that. Uh, we just wanna make sure that any tall structures or tall vehicles or any boats or anything, um, do not damage the canopy. But we would be willing to, uh, make that compromise, especially if it's acceptable to the neighbors. Um, so, you know, Chevron Products Company is requesting approval for this conditional use permit for twenty-four hour operation to sell beer and wine. That is a type twenty license that we're requesting. Um, this facility is owned and operated by Chevron Corporation. This is not a franchisee. Um, store provides it as attractive and convenient shopping environment that offers high quality and convenient customer-centric offerings. I'm assuming that, uh, as the applicant, I can keep going? Anyway, thank you. Um, you know, Chevron operations ensure the highest quality standards for cleanliness, maintenance, and their adherence to restricted age sale items and regulations. Uh, the station would be operating twenty-four hours, seven days a week, and there will be three eight-hour shifts daily with maximum three shifts employees per shift. Standard state, um, beer and wine hours for sales is usually six AM to, uh, two AM. So, you know, we've worked with Shaun, we wanted to make sure that this project took into account the situation, you know, the, the, basically the situation in the neighborhood, and we decided that we would accept or would request to reduce the hours to ten PM. So six AM to ten PM. There's four doors in the new C store that would have beer and wine. Uh, they lock when, um, they're not, the hours are off, so there's no way anybody can sneak in. You know, the, the stores are designed, uh, for visibility from the cashier so that they can view the, the doors of the coolers. Um, there's cameras inside, outside of the store, and, um, everything's very well lit inside. The, the lights that you saw in the elevations, uh, they're kind of really a, a nice Spanish, our yard lights have the same, are the same one. They're not just gonna be these LED hoods that shine down. We're really trying to make this a really high-quality, uh, facility for the city. Um, security is a big concern. Uh, what we've done is, you know, we, we're gonna have the sides of the building gated off like Shaun mentioned. Um, it's, the, the back of the building was pushed as close to the existing wall as we could. Uh, the city was talking three foot, but the fire department wanted about three foot, six so that they could get through there. So we're gonna make it uncomfortable. No one's gonna be able to get back there. Those lights that we have on the building, we were gonna have those on motion sensors so that they'd go on if somebody moved and to notify, um, of anybody being back there. Um, Chevron is a statewide retailer with an impeccable record for being responsible retailer of beer and wine, uh, which has not caused community problems of any kind. Chevron has an extensive training program and use, utilizes specially-trained security personnel to determine how to configure staff in each, and outfit each store. And to assure that no sales are made to any minors. Uh, they, they have an extensive training program where once an employee is hired, he has to go through this training program. They get tested, they get retested on an annual basis. Um, it, it's just a very, very, um, strong concern that, you know, they're not selling tobacco to minors or beer and wine to any of the other, um, people. Um, we can, uh, th- there's, there's just a couple little things that we would like to talk about as far as a condition that we would like to have amended. And that is, uh, number twenty, there is a, it's a, it's called maroon in the report, but it's called chilled wine. It's a, just a stripe on the front of the stores that is kind of a, a extra mile brand element that we would like to maintain. So the elevation that you saw in the presentation is the elevation that we would like to, to keep. I, that would be the only condition that we would like to modify. Other than that, we're very acceptable to the, um, conditions as provided. And if we could modify the height of the canopy, uh, lowering it two feet, I think that would be very acceptable to Chevron. And I have people from Chevron that could answer any operations. The gentleman who is the, uh, business consultant for this area, he's, he runs these stores. He runs the Chevron that's north of town on PCH. He's available here for any questions you may have on operations and training, but we request your support.
Okay, thank you. Um, would the commi- commissioners prefer that we go right into request to, for the speakers? Or do you wanna answer some more questions based upon what the architect has produced for us? Okay, then I will, uh, go right to the request to speak, and of course you will have chime afterwards to respond after the discussions.
Okay.
And we may wanna hear from, uh, the folks that are with you too. Alright, uh, refresh, the first person request to speak, uh, first let me?
Can I, there was one item that I forgot to mention.
It's actually very, very important. Um, one of the other conditions that was brought up on the beer and wine sales was that we were limited to, uh, no more than, no single containers, and Chevron's fine with that. So what we would like to do is make it a condition that you cannot purchase anything less than three containers, a multiple pack, that's prepackaged by the manufacturer, and, um, that's to help alleviate and eliminate people just buying one-offs. So I'd like to make sure that that's modified too. Thank you.
Alright, I'm going to go run through the instructions again on the request to speak. If you desire to speak before the planning commission, please complete the following information and give this form to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called. There will be a time limitation of three minutes per person. Did anyone not get their slip in and they want to now produce one? No? Okay. The first, uh, speaker will be, um, Jody Payne.
Hello, my name is Jody Payne. I am a resident of Dana Point. I've lived right directly behind the gas station for twenty-two years. Uh, I wanna first off thank the planning department, Shaun and Matt, for helping the residents with giving us so much information in the last couple of weeks so that we know what's going on, and, um, they've done a fantastic job, and I re- we really appreciate that. Uh, I'm, I just wanna speak about the issue of the canopy. Uh, we are concerned about that. Uh, we feel like the sixteen foot, uh, five in, or six inch clearance is too high. I went around and took pictures of all the other gas stations in town. I think that's in your packet. And, uh, most of them are thirteen, six, including Costco, which is, I, I know San Juan Capistrano, but that's thirteen, six. It's plenty high. There's lots of boats in there. Uh, I think thirteen, six is, would give almost everybody enough room to get their boat in. If, if that's not enough for the small minority of boats, they can use a fuel dock, which is the reason that's there. So I think if it's good enough at Costco, it, it certainly should be good enough for us in, at the entryway of our town center. Uh, the Chevron up by Harbor House is fourteen foot clearance, so even that one is lots of room. Uh, I really appreciate them coming down to fourteen and a half feet, and hopefully we can find a compromise there. Let's see. It, this is such an important corner. Uh, we've waited a long, long time. Uh, we've had things start up and then stop. It's, this is going to set the tone for, for the entryway to our community. Uh, the, the, um, upscale look of this building is great. We're really eager to see, uh, something beautiful come into place, and we appreciate you considering a thirteen, six clearance rather than a sixteen, six clearance. Thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Payne. Alright, next speaker, Nancy Jenkins. Hi Nancy.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, I live in the village right behind. We've lived here twenty-five to twenty-seven years. We're one of the original homeowners, and several things. When I initially filled out the form, they said, are you in favor of it, against it, or do you just have questions? And there are aspects that I'm really in favor of, the landscaping. I think that will be a really great improvement. In fact, they do have a nice little small landscaping area that was, wasn't there before. And the present Chevron put it there, and people from all over commented on that little area. The other thing, speaking to the heights of the canopy, just last week, we were on a, on the boat area, the dock where they gas up, and we were waiting for a boat to come. And, uh, we were there for about forty-five minutes. Two boats came during that time. They have lots of area to go gas up in the harbor. So I think the big boats already know where they can go, and I do appreciate, and I feel sorry for them when boats that don't know go and hit, but maybe they can have more better signage. That's not offensive to say what is the height of the boats, and to keep it as low as possible to go in with the environment. And then the last one, which I think is the Achilles heel, is the alcohol. They have people that are drinking down there, around there right now. Where they're getting the alcohol, I don't go up and ask. But I think that they can go together and buy the three packs of wine and be sitting on the street corner. And as you well know, we had a huge fire in our neighborhood by a homeless person. And we have, um, homeless people, um, and they come from the harbor, and they come right up, and they're sleeping around in that neighborhood. And I just think that the alcohol sales will just promote it even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Swayze. Welcome.
Hi, I also live in the same neighborhood that's right above the, the gas station. Um, I've only lived in the neighborhood for three years after moving here from Maryland, but I very much appreciate all the time and effort that the planning commission is putting into this and the planning department to come up with some solutions to some, um, requirements that we're making or they're making. Um, one of the things I would like to see perhaps, especially because we do look down on the gas station, is a little more landscaping that could possibly go in the northeast corner behind the, the, uh, convenience store. And I think too, since this is the gateway to the city, um, you know, you guys are really sort of setting up high standard for any other commercial development that can take place along there. Um, one of the things that I am concerned about, well, some of the things that were answered is some of the environmental issues and whether the health department's involved. Um, again, the, the alcohol situation, like, um, the Arco is half a block away, sells single serve, uh, the fuel dock sells beer and wine, Circle K sells everything, Bevmo sells everything. Um, I saw that there was some condition about saying that no alcohol containers less than twelve ounces for beer or seven hundred and fifty milliliters for wine would be sold, but it's nice that you're considering doing like three packs because there was a study done by the Coalition for a Drug-Free Santa, San Bernardino that's found that supermarkets and many of the AMPM-type stores were selling single shrink-wrapped into packages for two. So they were getting around that idea, so selling more things. So, you know, given the issues that we've had in our neighborhood and the availability of alcohol, um, you know, I'd really like you to consider just not having alcohol sales there at all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Janine Rutter.
Hi, uh, my name is Janine Rutter. I live in Dana Point in the neighborhood that's directly behind the station. Uh, first of all, I wanna say I am very excited to see the improvements that are being made to the Chevron station. Um, I think it definitely has a potential to have a positive impact to the interest to our city. Um, area residents and neighbors have expressed to me three areas that are important to them in the build-out of this project. Number one, environmental. Number two, the aesthetics. And number three, and primarily and most importantly, safety. I can only trust the city and certain regulations will protect us from environmental concerns. I have viewed the plans, and I do have some suggestions with regards to the aesthetics. The main one is regard the awning height. I understand you're raising that significantly from where it is today to accommodate boaters. However, upon observing other areas in, in stations that currently serve that clientele, we should be able to reduce the planned clearance height by at least a few feet and still meet that need. It's important to keep the design and scale with that small corner. We don't want this to look like one of those flying Jays with a huge store and a big awning that we see off the freeway. That leaves us to safety. This is by far the most important factor, not only for the residents, but also for the station itself. I'm worried about alcohol sales. My first preference, quite honestly, is no alcohol sales at all. Um, I understand you're thinking about targeting the boaters, uh, for potentially purchase the alcohol, and, uh, and I understand that you've agreed to limit sales to just beer and wine. Um, but i- if you're gonna insist on doing this, we do have a couple of additional things. One, definitely absolutely no single serve, and two, I think we need to adjust the time. I don't think anything should be sold after eight o'clock because if you're not wanting to target those things that we don't wanna target, then eight o'clock should take care of any boaters even in the summer season, and also anyone that potentially wants a bottle of wine or something, and they wanna pick it up on their way home for dinner. Okay? Um, but our big thing on this is, you know, we just don't want you to become another Circle K. And for those of you that aren't familiar with Circle K in Dana Point, many residents don't even go there. They don't go near that station due to the type of activity alcohol, alcohol sales draws there. It's unsafe. It contributes to area nuisances such as underage alcohol sales, public intoxication, and drugs being sold and used around the station. We want your station to be the station that offers a safe, clean environment we can all enjoy and use, and that welcomes guests into our city in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charles Payne.
Thank you. Uh, no relation to Jody, by the way. Uh, I'm a Dana Point resident. I live in the neighborhood just above the station there. Uh, also, I happen to be a candidate for city council in District Three, in that district. Uh, my day job currently, I'm a police lieutenant, um, over our investigations bureau, and one of the details that I oversee is our vice unit. And they have, among other responsibilities, uh, the enforcement of liquor laws and making recommendations on, uh, conditional use permits for, uh, alcohol sales and, and other businesses. Um, one of the major concerns that the residents have around there is with respect to the proposed alcohol sales. Um, as you can already tell from some of the other speakers, um, that's a big concern. Um, personally, I'm, I'm very excited to see a business that's willing to invest in our community, uh, put some money into our town, and, 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 uh, the facility that you guys presented, uh, is gonna be a huge improvement over what's there. Um, it, I, I really applaud some of the design elements and the thoughtfulness that's gone into it, uh, and I'm excited to see that come to fruition. Um, but as everybody knows, we have an ongoing problem with transients, loitering, public intoxication, and things like that, particularly at that corner because it's across from Doheny State Park where they have the feed, which we don't have a lot of control over, or actually any control over frankly. Uh, and we don't wanna see the transient problems at that location be exacerbated. We want, we don't wanna see that get worse. Alcohol sales are likely to do that. Um, the residents have an interest in not worsening those problems, uh, with the easy availability of alcohol. The city doesn't wanna negatively affect, affect our tourism, uh, by causing problems in that area, problems at the beach and the harbor and so forth, uh, with public drunkenness. Uh, and the business doesn't want that, uh, to create an attractive nuisance because that dissuades people from coming and patronizing them. Um, and, and that's evident based on some of the, the really, uh, great design elements they put into it, uh, with lighting and things like that to, uh, try and dissuade camping and, and loitering. Um, I understand their desire to be profitable to sell beer and wine to beachgoers, to, to boaters and so forth in that community. Uh, I'm glad to see us using the conditional use permit as a tool to try and mitigate that. Uh, the three-pack sales, I think, is a good step in that direction if we're going to allow alcohol sales at all. Personally, I don't think, uh, it may not be the wisest solution, but if we're going to go in that direction and understanding that they're only gonna make these investments if it's profitable to do so, um, I think we can reach some kind of compromise there. I think the three-pack, uh, minimum is good. I think the minimum wine sale size of seven hundred and fifty milliliters is standard size is good. Uh, the minimums for, uh, for beer, for, uh, malt liquor, for, for wine coolers and so forth. One of the suggestions that I heard, uh, that I think is a good one is ending the sales at eight PM. Um, I think that, uh, that allows them to serve the boating community, serve the beach-going community, uh, and also cut that off early enough that we're not creating a nuisance in the evening hours, uh, again with our transient population there that's, that's already in that area. I think safety is, i- is, is the biggest, uh, concern there. The, uh, I, I think that our main priority should be the peace and safety of that surrounding community. I think we can do that. I think some of the compromises we've talked about are good, uh, as far as, uh, helping make that time happen, and I see my time's up, so thank you very much. I think some of the compromises we've talked about are good as far as helping make that happen. And I see my time's up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charles. That was you. But you did a good job. Come back. Next feature, speaker is Deborah Gremalia. Did she leave or did you step out? She left. Okay. Then we have, and please understand, I can't read my own writing. So it's just hard for me to read anybody's writing. Is it Vander? Yes. Thank you.
I just wanted to be very brief and say that my name's Gary Vanderhagen. I live in Bow Harbor, which is up the top of the hill behind the gas station. The reason I'm here tonight is to make sure that the owners of the gas station, which is Chevron, understands the sensitivity of alcohol sales at the, literally, literally at the epicenter of transient activity, Dana Point Harbor, the flood control channel, the beaches, the parks. You can't even legally consume alcohol, I don't believe, at the beach or at the parks or whatever. And the people that'll be consuming the alcohol will be doing so illegally at the beach. According to Orange County's big study, I believe it was last year, 22% of the homeless in Orange County are drug addicts and alcoholics. 22%. And I've, I kind of look at South Orange County as the sober living Riviera now. In other words, there's so many sober living houses up and down the coast here. And the people that wash out of that program, they're going to be attracted to these liquor sales so close to all of these places where the homeless are residing. I just hope that Chevron will reconsider the alcohol sales at that station and be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Darren Perman.
Good evening. My name is Darren Perman. Been a resident of the village right above the property for over 25 years. I also serve on the HOA. And it's great to see all of our neighbors here tonight. And I love this city. I've had businesses in the city and I've had a boat in the harbor for over 15 years. And I actually fill up my gas at Chevron, and I love your gas. I do not think that the height needs to be so height because most of us who have larger boats, we are not pulling our boats into a gas station to fill it up. And I have been witnessing for years that the boats that go through are smaller boats. Much smaller boats that easily clear the height. So I don't think we need a height variance in that area at all. Oh, how much do we love this city? We love this city, but we have, we just have a major problem. We all know it with the transients and the homeless. I mean, my house almost burned down a couple months ago with the fire. Literally, the fire was burning the trees next door to us. I think this city needs to preserve our community. And we need a zero tolerance and do everything we can to make our community safe. And the last thing we need to be doing is opening up more sales of alcohol. And I think we need to send a message to our city is changing. We're about to expand. I believe that Dana Point is going to become the Gold Coast. You know, everyone's going to want to live here. But I think people who move into our community for a business or move in need to understand that our city is here to preserve. And we need to take care of that or our property values and our safety is going to be at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our final speaker is Charles Payne. Oh, I'm just so excited to see you up here. It's just so much fun, the first and second time. All right. Thank you very much for all of your, making your interest known. And at this point, and we don't, we're not just moving on just to get past this, but we do have other places to go first. And I think what we need to do is open up discussions with the, are you all ready? Are your commissioners ready for discussion? Or do you have more questions right now, for Sean?
I have a question.
Yes.
So currently, there's no alcohol sales at the site, correct?
That's correct, sir.
How does the city or the ABC board determine or dictate or give guidelines relative to spacing alcohol sale facilities? Are there guidelines? Is there, okay, not so many within density of acts or?
There is, I believe it's by census block or is it tract?
So the, I can jump in, I'm sorry. The ABC regulates the total number of license types in each census tract. So there is a sort of density correlation. And then within our zoning code itself, there are some standard setbacks to certain uses, I believe, churches. There's other playgrounds, et cetera. There are certain restrictions on how close you can be to those as well.
Okay. So if we approve this, then they have to go to the ABC to get a license from them or?
Yes, sir.
They already had one or what?
No, they'll have to, absolutely. If this is approved, prior to any sales occurring on site, they'll have to go through the ABC process. And as a condition, anyone who's going to look for Chevron looking to put in there to sell alcohol would also have to complete the required lead training program. That's through ABC.
Okay. And have we, they presumably looked into the likelihood of their success based on the density around the census tracts? Do we have any feel for that or that's just at the applicant's risk?
It's at the applicant's risk, but I don't believe with this license type, there's an issue.
Thank you.
Commissioner, would you? Take your time. Discussion? Would you like to ask further questions before we go into discussion? Does it, do any of you have further questions before we go into discussion? No? Okay. We'll open it up for discussion. Oh, would you like to respond?
Well, yeah, I mean, to some other comments?
Sure.
So maybe I can respond to a couple simple, simple things. As far as landscaping in that northeast corner, I think we, I worked with Sean on making that so that it didn't have a lot of, it's a decomposed grant is what's proposed now. That whole area is fenced off so nobody can go in there at all unless they climb over a fence. And we wanted to make sure it was as uncomfortable for somebody so that they wouldn't want to go back there. So it was really to provide better visibility back there in that one corner. The canopy heights, you know, we've, I think 14.6 is a pretty good compromise. I mean, we, not, we don't want to have 16 foot six, but we would like to have 14 foot six as far as a clear height. As far as alcohol sales, the hours of operation, you know, I think originally we had discussed with Sean that 6:00 AM to 10, to 9:00 PM was an option. So we would like to go from 10:00 PM to 9:00 PM as our cutoff time. And then I think something that we should all keep in mind too is condition number 14. I've got to read it here. My eyesight's not that great. "The city shall maintain the option to reconsider the conditional use permit and conditions therein at any time if the community development director and or chief of police finds it necessary to reevaluate the impacts of the use on the surrounding community." I mean, I think there is a safety measure if Chevron doesn't do what they say they're going to do. So I'd like to bring that to everybody's attention too.
Do we notice?
And I'm sorry, Chair, Commissioner, Chair Murphy. I just wanted to highlight on number 19 with the condition approval that the applicant architect just referenced regarding landscaping in that northeast corner. It is required to do a formal landscape review by, to be reviewed by our contract landscape architect. That back corner is specifically called out as a corner of that condition in terms of evaluating the potential of, you know, looking at trees, but also again to address any, through design ways to make it as difficult as possible for illegal camping. So that's just for reference. We have included that in the condition to address that and look at that area further if approved, as soon as we.
Thank you.
I'd also like to have Monaco come speak with, he's the business counselor. He runs, he's in charge of the Chevron station north of town.
Yes, please do.
Good evening. My name is Monaco Carrillo. I'm the business consultant. So I supervise the stations here in Dana Point. I supervise 14 stations for Chevron. The, I want to talk about the training that the employees go through when a catchers get selected. We always check their background to make sure they have no misdemeanors. And a misdemeanor, if they sold alcohol to a minor, that becomes a misdemeanor. So they automatically don't get selected to work for us. The employees go to four days of training, two days classroom training, two days on the job. And part of the training, when they go to class, it talks about age-restricted products. So we talk about making sure that they ask for the ID when customers are buying tobacco, lottery tickets, and beer and wine. We also, part of the other 60, 56 days of training, so they go through 60 days total, they actually being shadowed by another employee at the station to make sure that they're doing their four steps and that they're asking customers for the ID that look, appear to be under 30 years of age when they're buying age-restricted products. We also have a mystery shopper program at each of our stations. Every quarter, we send a mystery shopper to the station and nobody knows who it is. And that person is under 30 years of age and then make, to make, to catch the employee if the employee's asking them for the ID. So that's part of our internal mystery shopper program. And part of, and another thing is we also have decoys that ABC sends. And for the last eight years that I've been a supervisor in Orange County and North San Diego, we have not failed the decoy operation. Okay?
Any questions?
Any questions for this speaker?
Thank you.
I do have one question, staff.
Yes, please.
Sean, I apologize for this, but the applicant mentioned condition number 20, removing the chilled wine stripe from the building. Was there any reason that that was requested to be removed?
So as the applicant's architect indicated, that that is a component of their branding of the site. And I believe this next slide will show that. That's this portion right up here. The basis of the condition to remove it is staff's efforts to try to get the most authentic architectural style of this vernacular as possible. Obviously, it's a smaller feature as part of their component. Yeah, it would count towards their signage for the site. It would add approximately 25 square feet. So even with that 25 square feet, they're substantially below the, the allow, substantially below the maximum limited signage. It's completely up to the commission whether or not you choose to remove that. But that was the basis of the creation of the condition.
Are there any other questions before we begin with the discussion? No? All right. Who would like to start?
So we will close the public hearing?
We will close the public hearing.
The public comment period, I apologize. Just got, I'm sure, do you want to go?
Thank you. It sounds like if they've been working on this for six years, that there's been a tremendous amount of effort put into it and a lot of iterations, I'm sure, and a lot of staff turnover and change that they've been working on as well. I am, and it sounds like from staff that they've been a very good applicant in working with them to create a good architectural product for our city, which so many people noted as a gateway to our city. And it seems to me like they're trying in every way possible to be a good neighbor, given that they came in here and voluntarily offered to drop the canopy height two feet and also cut back this alcohol sales time from their proposed 6 to 10 to 6 to 9. And given that other places it can even go to 2:00 AM. I can certainly appreciate the concern of residents and neighbors about the alcohol sales. I'm supportive of the multi-pack sales requirement for the alcohol sales. It seems to me if someone wants alcohol, there's certainly lots of places, including nearby, that they could go get it. And it would be, I could see it being a good draw for their clientele to be able to, hey, fill up your boat and car and grab a case of beer for the, for the day on the water. With that being said, I'm supportive of the project. I think they've done a great job with their architecture and seeming my perception and trying to work with everybody who has a concern. I'm supportive of the project with the 14 foot six clearance height on the bottom of the canopy with a 9:00 PM cutoff on the beer and wine sales. I'd recommend a consideration for a cactus garden back in that corner if we're trying to discourage camping. And it's apparently walled off, so it's kind of non-visible. So not really good to be able to see people, but a cactus garden might be just the trick. I'm, given their investment that they're making, I'm supportive of the maroon or chilled wine stripe and also the condition on the multi-pack sales.
Thank you. Commissioner Opal?
So I actually have a lot of the similar comments as Commissioner McCann. I think that the applicant and Chevron have gone through a lot of effort to make this a beautiful building, being the gateway they've looked at, a lot of the materials to make sure it stays beautiful. They've spent time and effort in landscaping, hiding the trash, doing everything that's required. There's the lovely little modular wetlands out there for their water conditioning as well. And similar to Commissioner McCann, I support the project with the reduction of the sales to 9:00 PM. The one clarification I would like to make on the multi-packs is the manufactured multi-packs and not the Saran Wrap from San Bernardino. So keeping that condition. And also I think it's important that for a safety aspect, that one of the conditions of approval is number 14, that the city can reconsider this at a later date if it does prove to be a nuisance or a problem, to bring it back to community development. So I'm very much in support of it.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
I think the high quality of the design and the materials is such a dramatic improvement from what we have. I fully support this. I think also, we talked a lot about boats, but campers are also a big client that's going to require high clearance. And the California vehicle code requires 14-foot clearance. So we're talking about 14.6 and I think that's a very reasonable compromise. I also appreciate the compromise they've, they've offered on the hours. And I think having a corporate client, a business the size of Chevron and the track record that they bring, they're going to be more responsive probably than an individual. So I think that we have an excellent business that's going to provide an excellent gateway to our community. On page two of the conditions, item two says that there's oversized parking, and I would like to add temporary, because with the circulation, I think it should be clear that anyone parks there that it's temporary. So if you have a camper parking there, I know the truck can't get in for refueling if that, if any of those spaces were being utilized. On page four, we talk about the items ten through nineteen, and this area, I think, is really nine through eighteen have to do with beer sales. So there's three paragraphs there that should be revised in the conditions. And I guess the other item, as long as, we said twelve ounces in, and there's, some of the manufacturers are doing six and seven, or seven and eight ounces. And so I wouldn't say you have to sell twelve ounces, but that was in one of the conditions. So I would just say beer sales would be in manufactured prepackaged rather than limit, rather than say a certain ounce. But the wine of the fourteen liters, I think, should be left, as is. So I'm in favor of the sales, and I think, I'm in favor of this project, and I think the liquor sales are something that's going to provide profitability and enable them to make this investment. And at the same time, I think we have adequate controls if things don't go as we have projected.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to repeat everything that's already been said. I think you guys have all summarized it fairly well. Speaking to some of the modifications, item twenty, which is that band, I have no concern leaving that, as long as we ding them for that on their signage, so they can't come back and get additional signs. You know, as far as the can, because I looked into those heights as soon as we got our staff report. One thing that, you know, I totally agree with is that the Costco height is the right height, and I was able to get ahold of their plans, and they are fourteen-six. Their note is thirteen-six, I think, on there, but they're actually built to fourteen-six, so we're talking about the exact same thing. In support, and, you know, I think the applicant should be applauded for, you know, making these overtures and making adjustments to their plan on the fly. You know, that means a lot to us sitting up here that, you know, try to mediate some of these issues sometimes, so I don't think that should be left out. The six to nine PM, again, seems appropriate. I was comfortable with ten. And then tent parking, that's an interesting, I didn't catch that, but I would be in support of making sure that there's some signage that people can't just park there and walk away. I guess that would be assumed, but from circulation, that could be a problem. Other than that, I mean, I, it's a beautiful building. I wish I had, we saw more projects with, you know, real, authentic mud tile roofs and scalloped edges, you know, bringing the real architecture here is really valuable, so thank you for that. And so I'd be in support with making some tweaks to these conditions. I don't know if it's easier, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. I concur with my fellow commissioners to, for the most part, I think that in reading all of this and trying to digest it all and looking at the map, we all have expressed that that, those four, well, two streets and two streets where they cross, where Coast Highway crosses with Del Visbo, really are pivotable area for our city. And to take the effort and the time as you have to put together a good proposal for that piece of land is to be, is to be value, great value. It clearly is easy for visitors coming in, whether they're coming from Del Visbo or they're coming down from San Juan Capistrato, not San Juan, sorry, Laguna Beach, or if they're coming off the freeway and whipping around and starting back up. This is, this is who we are. We all kind of know this. This is our great place that we live, and this is our great town. And we want to encourage visitors, obviously. The way this is set up, it presents for good flow in and out of your station with maybe a few tweaks. The, I think there has been a lot of discussion about the beer and wine issues, and I agree with the resolution on that. As far as the building itself, it's very lovely. It's very lovely. And it really does work well with our little downtown there and our gateway into the harbor and our gateway up the street further. So I think that that's a wonderful addition, and the fact that you have worked very diligently to make this the aesthetics. You've taken tiles, which, we have similar tiles on the overpass, just right there by the gas station, the bridge, where everybody walks over this bridge, and there's tiles set in, so it's a following theme. And let's see, I don't think I made any other notes. The, some of the, the Mission Tile West, Max Paves, very beautiful. And I know, I'm not, trying not to repeat anything that's been said. I agree with my fellow commissioners, and I think it's a good project. Thank you. All right. Do commissioners have anything else to add?
Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please do.
I move that we approve coastal development permit CDP eighteen dash zero 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 eight, conditional use permit CUP eighteen dash zero 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 seven, and site development permit SDP eighteen dash zero zero one five, to demolish an existing Chevron station and construct a new Chevron service station and convenience store with alcohol sales and sign program at three four three oh six Pacific Coast Highway. With the modifications as follows, that the canopy be lowered to a clearance height of fourteen foot six inches underneath, that the beer and wine sales be limited from the hours of six AM to nine PM, that condition twenty regarding the maroon stripe be stricken, therefore allowing the chilled wine color stripe to remain, and a condition requiring only multi-pack sales of alcohol that are manufactured, manufactured packaged as multi-packs. And I'm open to any other modifications to those suggestions.
I'll go ahead and second that for discussion. So on that, the alcohol condition, I would, is it for a count of three or more? We want to be specific to no less than three per package?
Yes.
Okay.
And what size package?
I'm fine with the sizes as identified in the, in the report.
Okay, if you would add that, amend that, just to add that specific condition.
Okay. Yeah, I meant to the three, three item minimum on the multi-pack?
I would add temporary on the parking.
Okay, so signage on the site that identifies the parking as temporary? Is that what you're suggesting?
Either striped or some indication, I don't know.
So, to that point, actually, that is something that we looked at and evaluated as part of the project. And so operationally, they receive the dumps, like to, for loading, unloading, and for the trucks circling through that, because that was brought up by staff as well. And so their plan is just operationally, they'll cone that off, but they don't foresee that to be a problem, because, as I said, the fuel deliveries come early in the morning before it's foreseen that being an issue or having blocking. So that's just part of their operation. So it was discussed, if you feel strongly, you can, but I just want to make that clear that that wasn't something that was not reviewed and analyzed during the processing of the project.
The ingress and egress is critical to all service station operations, and having easy access for people coming in in their cars or camper, I think if that's, operationally, it should be temporary. That's my.
Well, on a festival weekend, people could easily see that and say, hey, that's a good place for my car to sit for ten hours. So I'm open to adding signage regarding the parking as a thirty-minute limit or something like that, if other commissioners are.
So they have already, there's actually a note already on the plans consistent with that discussion, I believe, we have regarding community access.
Good idea.
All right, any more?
Second?
Oh, yes.
You have a second?
We have a second. Any more comments? All right. We ready to proceed to the vote? Please vote. And we get five out of five. Can't do better than that. John? Yes, and thank you all for coming. I hope we didn't keep you up too late. All right, moving on. Moving on to old business, there is no old business. Moving on to new business, there is no new business. Staff reports.
Nothing related to report this evening, but I just wanted to give a heads up at the next meeting, if you could all have your calendars at hand, and we can talk a little bit about the upcoming holidays and how they may impact planning commission schedules. So I've noted that on November twelfth, it's Veterans Day. We have a scheduled meeting, but City Hall is closed that day. So my recommendation is we might want to consider canceling that at the next meeting.
What day is that, sorry?
November twelfth is Veterans Day. And then the second meeting in November is eleven twenty-six, and that is the Monday immediately following Thanksgiving. So I just want to check everyone's availability at the next meeting and see if we need to make any adjustments, and we could probably carry that through the end of the year. That's all I had this evening.
Okay, your plan is to move the November twelfth, because of the Veterans Day, to the next meeting, which is?
Well, I think, I'm just asking if you could give a little thought to your holiday plans, and we'll make the decisions at the next meeting.
Okay, we'll ruminate.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. We had staff reports, commissioner comments?
Good job.
And what time is it? Oh, Lakeview. Okay. No other comments? Not that we're sad, you know, summer's over, or we're happy that, I don't know, it's going to be cold, or?
I'm happy we had an applicant that was willing to compromise.
Yes.
On the spot.
Yes.
Made things a lot easier.
And thanks to Sean, I know you worked, you and your group worked pretty hard on that, because there was a lot of distinct items that you had to.
Thank you. And just to Commissioner McCann's point, they were, even as getting to that point, with all the architectural details on board, as well as a lot of that site planning, they were very willing to be, listen, you know, asking questions and trying to understand, but very willing to, always wanting to get the best project possible for Dana Point.
Always interesting how many people show up during political season to these hearings. Instantaneously, that's my own comment.
In what season?
Political season.
That's true. That's true. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you. And I guess we leave, we leave all our stuff.